Really, nothing's really changed since the last time we talked about this when we authorized the, for me, I still think that we're confusing our needs and our wants. And that I don't like government infusing themselves into the private market. I've said numerous times that I trust the market to do what needs to be done. And so, I completely understand with, I mean, I really appreciate Omni. And I said this first time, this is actually a better deal than I thought we were going to get. And I agree that the plan for this hotel that is going to happen does need a subsidy. I just still question the fact of whether or not that is the hotel that we actually need. And because I just, I truly believe that the, that the free market fills needs. And so, and that's probably why I'm going to vote against it because I'm just not an ends justify the means. Because I, I do think in the end, this is going to be a good, it's going to benefit the city. It's just how we get there. All right. Ed?
So, we've heard about an hour and a half uninterrupted proposal, or proponents of this hotel advocate for what in my mind was decided many years ago. It's decided now, so I'll try and make whatever points I can. If you listen to the presentation, it'd be crazy not to do a hotel with a convention center. And of course, that's what the convention sports and leisure study told us in 2009. But we didn't bring it up at the time of the MAPS III campaign, I believe, because we didn't want to chance the people voting on it. We've heard arguments here about a $85 million subsidy. And let me just address that first. It's not an $85 million subsidy. It's, if you were, if you were able to borrow that $85 million at 4% interest, you're talking about $135 million when you include the interest payments. Then the parking garage, you have to acquire the land, you have to come up with a $10 million shortfall that COPTA doesn't have. You have to, I believe this is the only time you've had a restrictive covenant from Omni. You don't know what adaptive reuse projects that is going to inhibit, like the spaghetti warehouse trying to turn it into a hotel. There are lots of hidden costs, so the number is not $85 million. But my overarching, I have specific issues, but the overarching issue is, if this is so compelling, if the data is so, the empirical data is so overwhelming, your, your study on the economic impact, take it to the people. Let the people vote on it. That, Mr. Rowling, is my primary objection. And I want you to understand, I mean, we can talk about whatever adjectives I use or pronouns, but that is the primary problem I have with this, is that we are going so far out of our way to avoid transparency and to let the people decide whether they want to make the investment. It was only four weeks ago, four weeks ago, that we debated a sales tax initiative to put on the ballot six weeks from now on September 12th. Mr. Rowling is going, saying he's going to pay $150 million in cash, right? While we're going to borrow the $85 million. When we do any other bond, right, general obligation bonds, we're going to have like 14 different things that people are going to vote on on September 12th. We take that to the people to borrow this kind of money. We could have done the same thing he's doing, right? We put together a $240 million sales tax package for streets next month. We could have put this $85 million on that initiative, let the people vote on it in six weeks, and we could have paid for it in cash. We could have paid $85 million instead of $135 million. But we didn't. And is anyone brave enough to say any reason why we didn't do that? Other than this, we don't want the people to vote on this. We don't want to be responsive to the wishes of the people. Put it on the ballot for the people and run a campaign. Put, you could run, the chamber could run a $3 million campaign. You could, you could use all this empirical data, all these arguments, flood the people with all these arguments, and then let them vote on whether they want to spend $135 million. Or if, if they did it on a sales tax and you get the money upfront, let them, let them vote on it. Because that, that's the whole, right, that's the whole power of MAPS, is we said, we're not going to borrow money. We're going to pay for these things as we go. We're not going to pay interest. But at the time, we knew that this, that this day would come. We knew that the hotel was an integral part of this. People in the finance department said, you should put money in this on the MAPS III because this day is going to come and a subsidy is going to be needed. But we didn't. We withheld this part of the story from the people because we were afraid of how they might vote. And that, to me, is the, is the greatest shortfall of this whole project, is that we've gone out of our way to not allow the people to have a say in this. So, maybe parasitic is not the right word. Because I agree, you could do it without us. If you can pay $150 million in cash with the assets you have, you can borrow $85 million at very favorable terms. You can do this without us. Maybe there's another word where you take money from people without asking first. Maybe that's more important, appropriate. Predatory, I think, absolutely applies. We have heard these numbers. We have heard these studies over the years. If I hear you, the HVS study correctly, you would have us believe that the economic impact is basically dependent on us missing out on conventions based on two variables, that the space, that the exhibit space wasn't available, maybe the dates, and also the block rooms. And because we're missing out on those two variables, those two variables are going to result in all these conventions coming here and all this economic impact to the city. Well, the convention sports and leisure study looked at several variables that are inhibiting convention performance in Oklahoma City. Five in particular that you didn't mention at all today. Number one was the lack of airport access, the lack of direct flights into Oklahoma City. That has not changed considerably since 2009. Number two was weather. That certainly has not changed and will not change. Number three was that at that time, we were the largest city in America without public transit on Sundays or in the evenings. And in 2017, we are still the largest city in America without public transit in the evenings or on Sundays. That has not changed. There will be a streetcar that will take people to certain destinations, but if they want to go to Penn Square Mall or any of the other amenities in Oklahoma City, that factor has not changed. And it is going to inhibit some of the numbers that you're claiming is going to come to the city of Oklahoma City from this investment. Number four was that the study was very clear, you don't have the CBB budget to go out and be competing for these type of conventions. Number five, and maybe most important, city, this is not, this is a bloodbath. Everybody's doing what we're doing. Everybody is making these kind of investments, but the, the number, Mr. Rowling talked about transient and group rates, right? There's two, two basic categories of people that stay in a hotel. One is transient. You go, you stay in a hotel to watch a Thunder game or whatever, you're traveling to Oklahoma City or whatever. The other is group, blocks of group rates. Over the last, since 2006 to 2016, transient rooms have gone up. Group rates have been completely flat over the last 10 years, right? So, that is not growing. But all these convention center hotels are sprouting up all over the place and all these convention centers are growing. So, everybody's competing for the same conventions. So, what does it take to get a convention to a city? It's not just block rooms. It's not just exhibit space. It's that you have to give away the exhibit space. You have to give it for free to the conventions. So, cities like Dallas spend $5 to $6 million a year in free rent on their exhibit space. Chicago, $15 million in free rent. San Diego, $6 million. Los Angeles, $12 million. Are we ready to spend those kind of millions of dollars in free exhibit space to try and get the conventions that he's claiming that we're going to get? Because it's not just about a public subsidy for a hotel. It's about, are you willing to play the incentive game to pay these conventions millions of dollars to come here? Because just having block rooms is not enough. That's not enough to get these conventions. It's going to cost millions and millions more. It's been decided, I can, I do have one question. Do we have the pro forma, do we have access to the pro forma that Omni has done? Does the public have access to that? Can we all review that?
We have a draft pro forma.
No, I, I mean, can I have it? Can the public have it? Can I look at it?
Yes. No? We'll give it to you.
Because what, what we're voting on today says that the pro forma provided by the qualified developers, based on that, the council finds that it's necessary in the best interests of the public. Well, I haven't reviewed that pro forma. I haven't seen it. It hasn't been provided to me or the public. And I'd like to see how that compares to the Stone study and all the other studies. Because one theory I have is that Omni isn't necessarily, they don't necessarily believe the convention thesis is going to get them across the, the finish line. I think they want to compete in the transient market against our existing hotel stock. And I think that that's part of the reason that we get this unique present that other cities are not getting, which is the restrictive covenant. So, I would like to see that pro forma. I mean, when we go to Wall Street and we have our, our revenue bond statement, the pro forma is going to be in there. This resolution that we're voting on today says, I've already read it, which I haven't. I mean, I'd like to see that, and I'd like the public to get to review this. This, this is a project that's just about as big as the convention center, right? With the construction costs, 190, I mean, and the public hears about the details on Friday in the Oklahoman, right? So, they get three, four days to process all this, right? And then we have the one and a half hour presentation, and then you have my five minutes of opposition. And that's it. But nobody gets to look over all this, including us. We had a presentation two weeks ago. You, you gave us sheets. We have to give them back to you at the end of the meeting. There's no pro forma. There's no getting to look at these studies ahead of time. It's just all put out here, and then, and then we're supposed to do it. Run a campaign. The benefit of a campaign is the public gets to look at all this stuff. Let the people vote on this, right? And then, you can have very detailed analysis over time, not just a four-day processing period for the public and then a dog and pony show here. Run a real campaign. If you win, the benefit is $50 million in interest costs you don't have to pay. That, that's the real tragedy of this whole decade-long saga, is that you did a convention sports and leisure study that to this day is still being withheld from the public. We have gone out of our way to minimize transparency and to shield the public from having a say in the matter. After all, it is their money. They deserve to have a say. Thanks.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to be very brief. I have some personal convictions. The people that are on the team know my personal convictions. The key word there is personal. They apply to me, and I don't think I should force them down somebody else's throat. Couple of convictions that I have, I believe it's best to do things with no debt. That's best. That does not mean you never use debt. So, I want that very clear. The next conviction that I have is that I believe in little government intervention. Small government, I believe, is better. However, when you take that, for example, to, do we need to add policemen to our, our police force for public safety? The answer is obviously yes. So, those two are in, they have to be balanced out. I think that applies here. In looking at this, this happens to be, I believe, a good business deal. And so, as a good business deal, I'm going to vote for it. Do I wish there were some differences? You never get everything in a business deal that you want. But I think this is a solid business deal. I've had the opportunity to look at the impact that this has on other hotels. One of the things that I've learned is that to run a convention hotel is different than running a normal hotel where you don't offer food service. And we, I, one of the questions I had early in this is, why didn't any of our Oklahoma City hoteliers bid on this project? And the answer was, I've given back, they don't possess the expertise in an outfit like Omni possesses or the other people who have submitted quotes for this. So, looking at this, if you have questions of me, you're welcome to use my cell phone, 213-6185, but I'm going to vote for it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. You said that number was, what again, Larry? Never.
213-6185.
I'm kidding, Councilman. I kid. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. You know, my, my pastor came in this morning and offered the prayer. The first thing he talked to me about this morning, when I met him over at the mayor's office, was that he's on, he's part of the delegation that decides where the SBC convention is going to be, Southern Baptist Convention. And he's always wanted to bring it to Oklahoma City. They can't do it. Can't do it. We don't have the resources. But he talked about, you know, if this thing goes through, he's like, man, I can't wait to try and, and bring them here. They all want to come here. Everyone talks about, you know, the resurgence of Oklahoma City, and they love it. They just don't have the resources here that they need for conventions specifically like that. The other thing I would have is, I would love to know what the economic impact was this past weekend. I mean, downtown, of course, was flooded. And if you throw Last Night in there too, that impact was huge. Without the Chesapeake, I don't think we're going to have four back-to-back Garth Brooks things. I don't know that Paul McCartney comes in. ChickSA Ballpark, I think, had 9,000 people Friday night and Saturday night, which is kind of crazy, looking at how the traffic was down here for the Garth Brooks concerts. So, yeah, this, I've got to admit, this proposal goes against a lot of different things for me personally too, Larry, but when I look at the benefit for the city long-term, and yeah, there's things in here I wish we would have done differently, but I, I think it's worth the risk. I think the risk has been minimized. And so, for the sake of the city, I'm going to support it.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to begin by saying I agree with Mr. Washington on one of his comments. Yes, sir. And it's, it's, it's a way we define the term blighted, and as he related to downtown Oklahoma City being blighted. So, everybody knows I work Saturdays, and, and this Saturday, this past Saturday, I was coming in late because we were watching our grandchildren. And so, about 10:30, I'm driving to our office, and I see this older couple walking back from the core part of downtown back to 21C Hotel. And so, I'm stopped, and they looked at me, I guess they thought I was an accountant or something, and said, hey, we were trying to find some shops down here. And I said, I don't know of any. We truly, and if you looked at those maps...
...park for her, right on the corner of Park and Olive.
Okay, but I don't think on Saturdays they're open. So, the point is, if you look at those maps that we were looking at earlier today, those locations that have an active new convention center had a very large number of retail, restaurants, entertainment facilities. I mean, we've got restaurants, I understand that, and entertainment facilities. And if you go far enough away from the core part of downtown on the weekends, you can probably find a retail store. But when I go out of town, especially if we get half a day off or something, to just walk around and find something that you could buy as a souvenir or something to take back to the family, is a common experience for me. We have nothing. I anticipate, once the convention center is completed, this hotel is built, we'll see an explosion of growth. We truly do lack a strong retail presence in downtown Oklahoma City. And I'm sorry, I just don't consider what's going on in Bricktown as a strong retail center. And I know up on North Broadway, Meg, you've got some things going on up there, but really, if you think in terms of the core part of downtown. So, I felt embarrassed to those, that older couple looking for something down here. We do not have it. So, Mr. Washington, from that perspective, we are a blighted area. And I would suggest this, I think Councilman Pettis would love to serve as a mentor for you. You've got a lot of potential. You just need some guidance.
Thank you, I'm just waddling now.
And so, talk with Councilman Pettis after the meeting, and you two could...
I'll give you some...
Work out, some arrangement. But anyway, so, let's go back to the points that we've been discussing. Craig, this is the question I was going to ask you, if you've got just a second. And I'm not going to ask you to explain present value concepts, but the numbers you were presenting were the present values of future revenues.
That's correct.
If we didn't use the present value figure, those numbers would be much greater.
Yes, yes.
Tremendously larger.
Each one of the sources has different timing of the revenues, and that's what we're trying to match up with that combination. But you're right, it'd be significantly more.
I know, I understand.
Yes.
Okay. So, the point I'm just trying to make though, is as we talk about the interest, certainly if we wanted to project several years from now, we had a specific project, the MAPS program is an ideal way to raise money and not incur interest expense. But the numbers we're looking at would be much greater if we used their future values as opposed to their present values. So, the present value concept takes out the interest component and matches future dollars with current dollars. So, that revenue source that you're reflecting is a much larger amount, tremendously larger. So, I think we're confusing people when we say, oh, but we've got all this interest. No, we don't. What the analysis we're trying to present takes the interest component out of there. If we wanted to bring in the interest, we could gross up those future revenues, and we would still see that, I anticipate, we'll have much more revenue from this activity than what it'll cost us. But here's the other question. With respect to these bonds, will we have the ability to redeem them early should revenue exceed?
Yes.
So, that would eliminate the interest component, and it would reduce the present value cost of those numbers.
Some of the scenarios we looked at, generally when we do the bonds, we'll have a call, call feature on those bonds, so they'll be callable. Generally, it's around 10 years. Pay quite a bit to get it lower than that, but you're, you're exactly right. With those revenues that we expect to come in, that is a potential in the future. If everything's on that higher level of success, that we have that potential, that we could at least pay down large portion, but even potentially several years in, pay off the full amount.
Yeah. So, I really think we need to focus on the fact, our part of this that we're agreeing to is 36% of the total cost of the hotel. And so, that's what I think we need to focus on. Just a couple of more points. So, as Kathy, I think, made the presentation, the MAPS I program that began in the early 90s, we raised 350-some million dollars for these various projects, a part of the first MAPS program. An earlier study by OSU at the time, this is a pretty old one, was suggesting that it created private investments of over $3 billion. Now, Kathy has more current numbers, and then, and her figures was $5 billion. I think this has the same potential, and I think it's going to occur rather quickly, especially once we get the convention center, the Core to Shore Park, this hotel in place. We'll see tremendous growth on the west side of the park, and I would suspect the total private investment will greatly exceed the multiple that we've seen with the first MAPS. Now, let's compare that with the multiple effect we had on MAPS for Kids. Much harder to evaluate. We spent $470 million. Can we identify private investment that came about as a result of that money? No, we can't. Now, was it important to make that type of investment? Absolutely. I think it was critical to get the public education system on a stronger position from a facility standpoint, but it did not create the same economic impact that something like this will. Again, compare our downtown area, this blighted area, with those areas where Omni currently has a convention center hotel. It is night and day as far as what we see, and it's just going to spur additional revenue for the community and certainly for the city in additional sales tax. And I'm sorry I didn't have my notes better outlined. And I appreciate Mr. Rattor's comments. We certainly want to employ local individuals in the construction of this hotel, and that's going to generate a lot of economic activity. You know, we combine Oklahoma City and Tulsa, and it generates over 2/3 of the economic activity of the entire state. Oklahoma City is almost twice the size of Tulsa in terms of its economic impact. This is just going to continue to accelerate that, and we'll certainly receive the benefit. And finally, I'm not trying to match point for point, but the issue about not taking this to the public for a vote. The sales tax vote that's coming up, our, our previous and proposed MAPS programs, those programs all created a tax on the public, on the citizens of Oklahoma City. That's why we had to go out and vote. This does not, it's a complex issue. We went through an hour and a half, and I know some people did not take proper notes up here, yes, on that presentation. Just imagine trying to make the same type of technical, technical presentation to the general public. It would be challenging at best. I enjoy it, there's a lot of numbers, but again, the general public may not be able to follow these issues as easily. But the fact is, there's no tax on them. This funding is coming from existing sources, and, and the hotel will eventually pay for itself as far as our investment. Thank you.
Meg?
Boy, I'm so glad David went before me. He really covered a lot of the issues, I want to say. I think it's obvious from the comments I've made in previous meetings and in lots of other private conversations, that I am incredibly supportive of this project. It is exactly what the city needs. It's exactly the kind of thing that we've seen happen before and has put this city on its incredible trajectory of this renaissance that we're living in. So, I think what I'd really like to say is, sitting through this hour and a half presentation has made me so proud of the team that we have working for us. City employees and our consultants are absolutely outstanding, and you're all sitting in this room. It's, you know, when you talk about the creativity it took to put this together, Craig and Brandon had the, the work, two years of work that went into risk mitigation. And I think that's one of the biggest things that we need to be aware of, is, you know, I know you come every day knowing that your job is to protect the city's general fund, protect our citizens, and for making a bad investment. And it's taken two years and the cooperation of the Omni team to get us both where we, I think we have as, as fair a deal as, as we were going to get. I think it's a much better deal than maybe we thought we were going to get when we started down this path a couple of years ago. The question about blighted is really an interesting one, but if you stand in the middle of the park or at the site where the hotel is to be built and look around, there is nobody that can tell me that that is not blighted. There is nothing there. There's a promise that there's going to be a convention center, and there's a promise there's going to be a park, and they're moving incredible amounts of dirt right now. There will be all of those things, but right now, there's not. And it's a leap of faith to invest $150 million of your own money on a piece of dirt that right now is an electric substation. I mean, it just, as a real estate developer, it's a, it's a huge jump to see this. And I, I don't think I want to address all the other issues. There are lots of adjectives that have been used today. And one of the ones that I have found disappointing over many, many years is this conversation about information that we've withheld. Saying that somebody's withheld information is akin to saying that they've been lying. And I, and I find that really offensive. I have for years, and I just need to say that once again. I'm excited to be part of this council when we have the opportunity to, to bring this project forward. Thank you.
John?
Councilman Greenwell, you actually left me speechless on that one. I'm still trying to recover from that comment.
Which one?
Thank you, Brother Washington. One of the first meetings that I had when I first got elected was with Mike Carrier and also with Ward Williams. And I had some concerns with Oklahoma City not attracting... And I had some concerns with Oklahoma City not attracting diverse conventions to Oklahoma City. Having a convention center hotel will open up that door for us to get more diversity as we talk about convention centers, as we talk about conventions. You mentioned, Councilman Stone, that you would love to have the Southern Baptist here. Next year, we'll be able to host the National Baptist Convention USA here, which the last time they, they came, that was in 1991. Having a convention center hotel opens up other national conventions to come to Oklahoma City. So I'm excited. I, I can tell you, I don't like that it costs, it's going to cost us roughly $85 million, but I am excited about the opportunities that this will bring to Oklahoma City. I, I do want to thank Omni for your commitment of 60, having 60% local subcontractors. And I, I hope that you all will keep that promise, even though it's not in any of the documents. I, I really hope that you all will keep that promise as a city. We always talk about our unemployment rate averaging around 3.3% to 4.5%, but when you look at certain populations in Oklahoma City and certain communities in Oklahoma City, the unemployment rate is, or averages 15% or higher. So this will allow people who may have fallen down on their luck to have a chance to succeed. So I really hope that you all will truly market and recruit from those communities that are struggling for employment. So I, again, I definitely like the 60% local hire for subcontractors and the simple fact that averaging maybe 450 to 500 jobs, I think is a good thing. But again, I really hope that you all will actively try to recruit from those communities that are struggling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, it's funny how history has a way of repeating itself over and over. Rick Moore, a friend of mine, gave me a book that I'm reading right now. It's called Nork, The Mayors of Oklahoma City. Right now, I'm in 1960 and Jim Nork has come up with this bold initiative. And we always talk about Ron Nork being a visionary, but Jim Nork was an incredible visionary. And he's proposing this, this initiative. And the Daily, no, the Oklahoma City Times writes, "This must rake as one of the greatest gambles the city has ever taken." Another paper writes, "This is a wasteful financial extravaganza. It's a betrayal of public confidence." And while I don't believe this is one of the greatest gambles that we've ever taken, I, I think it's, it's, it's an important point in time. It's a defining moment. It's whether we decide to continue, to move, to improve, to become a first-tier city. And I think that's the steps that we are taking today by voting for this. Another point I'd like to make is, this weekend, I was in Greensboro, North Carolina, and my son was there having surgery and I was playing the role of nurse, kind of taking care of him. And I got some time off Saturday afternoon and so I went over to their convention center with this hotel and it has 975 rooms. And I didn't know what to expect. I didn't know whether it's like walking in the scurven on Saturday or Sunday and there's, you know, a few people at brunch and people milling about in the lobby. There were 3,000 people there for a seven-day conference. 3,000 people. And there were people going to meetings and talking and it was just incredible. It was electric. And I got to thinking, you know, if 3,000 people spend $500, $600, or $700, seven days, that's a lot of money. And that's what this is about. It's about economic impact. You know, we did $5 billion in new investments with MAPS I. This is the opportunity to build on that. And so I think that we should, we should embrace this, we should be positive about it. And I'd end by saying that the bold initiative that Jim Nork proposed back in 1960 was to build a pipeline to a reservoir in southeast Oklahoma.
All right. We're on item 9K of the council agenda. Is there a motion? Cast your votes. Passes 7-2.